Then I would like to call the Flint Board of Education Special Board Meeting to order at 5:33. Board members, as I call your name, please reply present for the public record. Um, Treasurer Green? Treasurer Green?
Present.
Uh, Trustee McIntosh?
Present.
Trustee Perry?
Present.
Uh, and that's the only ones that we have on so far, right Monica?
That is correct.
Okay. At this time, the board will hear any comments from the public. Public members that have joined our meeting remotely are able to submit their questions through the question section, or may send an email prior to the meeting. Members of the public are reminded that the Board of Education by its bylaw 1370 are not obligated to answer questions, make statements, or commitments in response to issues raised by the public. In general, such issues will be referred to the superintendent's investigation, study, or recommendation. At this time, I'll ask Stefan if there are any comments from the public. I know it may take a moment for review, so I will pause to give them time for the public to finalize submitting their questions.
Steven, um, he's gonna defer to you to see if there's any comments in the question section, so he'll just wait for you to proceed.
Good evening. Currently, there are no questions in the comment section, uh, section.
Yeah.
Just a reminder, reminder to the public that you can submit your comments to this email, F B O E at FlintSchools dot org. You will read submitted comments at the next board meeting. Thank you. At this time, I take a motion and a second to go into closed session for an administrative hearing and receive confidential attorney-client communication. Board, when I call your name, please, please say yes or no to participate in the closed session.
So moved.
I'm sorry, I need to be, thank you.
Yes, second.
Okay. Um, Treasurer Green?
Yes.
Uh, Trustee McIntosh?
Yes.
Trustee Perry?
Yes.
That's a nice, it's a yay for myself. So the motion passes four zero. Um, so now we have, let me do a quick roll call. So we have Vice President Wright?
Present.
Treasurer Green?
Present.
Trustee McIntosh? Trustee Perry?
Present.
Secretary Ramsdale? And President Lester is present. So we have five present. Um, I would like to call the meeting back to order. And I would like to get a motion and a second to amend the agenda for the meeting for today to include, hold on, let me pull my script here. Give me one quick second. To include the resolution for the waiver of bylaws, the resolution for the superintendent, discipline res- discipline resolution, resolution for superintendent suspension, and resolution for interim superintendent.
So moved. Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded to amend the special meeting agenda. Can I get a roll call vote, President Wright, Vice President Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Green?
Yes.
Trustee McIntosh?
Yes.
Trustee Perry?
Yes.
It's a yes for me. The motion passes five zero. We'll begin, so the waiver of the bylaws of the Board of Education for the Flint School District. The Flint Board of Education bylaw 1320 states that the anticipated agenda shall be delivered to all board members at least forty-eight hours prior to any regular board meeting. Whereas bylaws 1580 permits a temporary suspension of any board bylaw or policy not established by law or contract upon a two-third vote of board members present. And the board wishes to suspend the forty-eight hour agenda notice requirement of bylaw 1320 to enable the board to transact the business listed below. Now therefore be it resolved that the Flint Board of Education, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, can I get a motion and a second?
I'm gonna go to, um, go to, and it's gonna be, um, the email that I sent you that says you are a panelist.
Hey Mo?
Not today, but five.
Yes, sorry.
We can, we can hear your conversation. Do you mind muting yourself real quick? Thank you, Mo. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
And then we will do a roll call vote. Vice President Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Green?
Yes.
Trustee McIntosh?
Yes.
Trustee Perry?
Yes.
And it is a yes for me. The motion passes to, um, waive the forty-eight hour agenda notice requirement of the Flint Board of Education bylaws 1320 to enable the board to act on the following resolutions. Issuance and placement of disciplinary memorandum dated October seventeenth, twenty nineteen, and superintendent's personnel record. Suspension of superintendent pending investigation, and appointment of interim district superintendent. I hereby certify this a true copy of the resolution. Oh, I don't think I need to read that part. And then, moving on to, issuance and placement of disciplinary memorandum and superintendent's personnel record. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. Um, the, can I get a roll call vote for Vice President Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Green?
Yes.
Trustee McIntosh?
Yes.
Trustee Perry?
Yes.
And it is a yes for me as well. The motion passes five zero. Therefore be it resolved that the Flint Board of Education approves the issuance of the disciplinary memorandum to Superintendent Derek Lopez dated October seventeenth, twenty nineteen, and authorizes the board president to execute the disciplinary memorandum on the board's behalf and cause disciplinary memorandums to be placed in the personnel record of superintendent. And then the last, uh, nope, the next amended item is the suspension of superintendent pending investigation. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, Vice President Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Green?
Yes.
Trustee McIntosh?
Yes.
Trustee Perry?
Yes.
And it is a yes for me. The motion passes five zero. Therefore be it resolved that the Flint Board of Education places a district superintendent on paid suspension pending conclusion of board's investigation, and authorizes the board president to inform the district superintendent of his suspension and to take action necessary to permit the prompt completion of the investigation by board council. And the last item on the amended agenda is the interim superintendent resolution. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved. So, second.
Can I get a roll call vote, Vice President Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Green?
Yes.
Trustee McIntosh?
Yes.
Trustee Perry?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me. The Board of Education, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education appoints Anita Stewart as interim district superintendent pursuant to board policy twenty-one thirty, effective immediately. That is the end of the amended agenda items. Um, with that, we shall close out the special board meeting and move directly into a regularly scheduled board meeting. So, um, I'm going to hit my virtual gavel, tink, and then find my script and call everybody to order. Mo, are you still there?
I don't think she is.
She didn't come back on.
I'm here, I'm just trying to, Betty on.
Trying to get Betty on, is that resolved?
Yes, I, it was her that called me. I've been trying to get her back into this meeting, but you can proceed, you have enough to proceed.
Okay, let me find where my script went. Hold on, I just had it. Ah, there we go.
It says Anita Stewart is talking, is she talking to us? No. Okay.
Oh, she did not mute it, is she?
Somebody, Betty, but it's somebody.
It's Miss Ramsdale's. Yep. Someone.
Is Miss Ramsdale calling her IT people to get this taken care of?
Yeah, looks like it.
Anita, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, were you able to hear the end of the last meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any, I'm, I'm glad that, I'm assuming you probably are not surprised by, um, that process and so, um, good, I'm glad. That being said, I'd like to call the regular board meeting to order on April fifteenth, twenty twenty. It is now eight twelve. Um, board members, as I call your name, please reply present for the public record. Um, Vice President?
Present.
Treasurer, Treasurer Green, I'm sorry.
Present.
Secretary Ramsdale? Secretary Ramsdale?
This is Ramsdale.
I'm muted, Miss Rams.
She's muted.
Oh, yeah.
She muted, Miss Ramsdale. She's present, and can yours, Trustee McIntosh?
Present, or yes.
Trustee Perry?
She's present, we're just having, I'm sorry, team, we're just trying to get her connected to the audio.
Sure. Okay. Board members absent, Stroger? Let me know when she's, um...
It's just reassuring to know that I'm not the only one with a cough. I hate that anybody else has that. What I'm saying, just be here, it's not just because I swear, just be me. I'm just, I'm putting one sword right here.
Are we, are we good to continue?
My mama.
You know, I can hear without, they can't.
Betty.
While you two figure that portion out, um, I invite the board to join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, thank you very much, Board, I appreciate that. There is nothing that we have to say the standards of practice currently, correct? I think that just adds a bit more of a headache for us trying to go around robbing to do the standards of practice. Are we able to skip that by chance?
That's up to you, I would imagine.
I think we can skip.
Can you hear that?
I want to make sure legally that we're allowed to skip the standards of practice, that we don't have to do that.
Yeah, I don't, most boards don't even have a standard of practice, so I think we'd be breaking the law.
Okay. I would like to entertain a motion and a second to approve the minutes and batch from the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty Board Committee of the Whole, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty Regular Board Meeting, March thirty-first, twenty twenty Special Board Meeting, March, uh, April eighth, twenty twenty Special Board Meeting, April eighth, Board Committee of the Whole Meeting.
So moved. Second.
I want to perform a roll call vote. Vice President Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Green?
Yes.
Secretary Ramsdale?
Yes.
Trustee McIntosh? Good to hear your voice, Betty.
Yeah.
Trustee Perry?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me, the motion passes six zero. At this time, the board will hear any comments from the public regarding items on the agenda. Public members that have joined our meeting remotely are able to submit their questions through the chat question section of the platform. Members of the public are reminded that the Board of Education by its bylaw thirteen seventy are not obligated to answer questions, make statements, or commitments in response to issues raised by the public. In general, such issues will be referred to the superintendent for investigation, study, or recommendation. Employees of the board, representatives of employee organizations, and/or unions of students should exhaust administrative procedure before addressing the Board of Education on matters for which administrative review is provided. You are solely responsible for the content of your public statement. At this time, I'll ask Steven if there are any agenda, any agenda-related questions from the public. I know it may take him a moment for him to review, so I'll pause to give him time to finalize. Steven, can you let me know when to proceed?
Good evening. Looking at the comments, the only comments we really had were during closed session still, uh, which were answered, uh, by me, mainly just as when the meeting was gonna be over. I do not have access to the email, which is provided, so if someone, uh, such as Monica can check that. Uh, but as far as this program is concerned, there is no questions.
And for you guys to know, nobody has submitted any questions through that email.
Okay. Now for the superintendent's communique, I will call upon Anita Stewart.
Good evening, Board members. Good evening. I am very thankful, humbled, and honored to be able to serve in this capacity. Although it is under very unfortunate circumstances, I do want you to know that I am humbled and honored to be able to serve among the pride of you, so thank you. My communique did start off with assistant superintendent communique. Um, I guess I'll be changing that. But first, I want to start off by saying the safety and well-being of our students, teachers, and staff is our primary focus. As you know, the pandemic has had a devastating impact on our community and forced K through twelve education to change dramatically for the remainder of the year. Despite that, our commitment to students' well-being and education must continue. We are deeply grateful to all of those who continue to collaborate with our district amongst those ever-changing circumstances. In particular, I'd like to thank our administrators, teachers, staff, union leadership, the Board of Education, and external partners, including CSM, First Student, the Dexel, Vartec, and Crem. At every stage of this crisis, their contribution to the health and well-being of our students has been incredible. As the situation continues to change, we know communication is key. We have been working hard to keep families informed. In recent weeks, we have created parent letters and robocalls with updates on school closures, full distribution plans, and the timeline of our distance learning plan. We've utilized social media and the website to provide updates on the governor's executive orders, COVID-nineteen, full distribution, frequently asked questions, and employee policies. We've contacted our seniors in high school regarding maintaining the momentum and excitement despite the change of plans. We participated in the mayor's town hall meeting and Q and A with residents, monitored daily questions from parents and community members on social media, and responded to inquiries, communicated with staff to share relevant updates, frequently asked questions, and words of encouragement, distributed updates and opinion pieces to the media to keep the community engaged and informed, contacted principals, teachers, and community partners to gather stories for reading videos during our story hour. We are grateful for the continued support of families, the Board of Education, teachers and staff, and the community as a whole. We are committed to the well-being of our students and families, and we will continue to adapt to ensure their needs are met. Though the virus is unforgiving, our community is strong. We will move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stewart. Now for the Human Resources Committee. Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute. Um, new business action, informational items, working with the whole, Board Committee of the Whole, Ms. Stewart to present. Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
Um...
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can, yep.
Okay.
The continuity of learning and COVID-nineteen response plan.
I'm sorry, having technical difficulties going in and out for some reason. The board members, I would like to share with you Flint Community Schools' continuity of learning plan. This plan, um, per the executive order of the governor, um, needs to be shared with you, and then it has to be submitted to the ISD. After it's submitted to the ISD, it will be submitted to the state of Michigan. The plan needs to be implemented by April twenty eighth. Some of the items that you will find in the plan are the frequently asked questions for our employees and our parents, and then you will find our plan as to how we plan to continue the academic learning for our K through twelve students for the balance of the year. Some of the things that I would like to highlight for you is that all of our ninth through twelfth grade students will be see, will be receiving devices so that they can continue with online learning. Teachers will be interacting with students, um, on the online platform, as well as, um, responding to them via email, telephone calls, so that they can have that one contact per week with our students in grades nine through twelve. K through eight, they will be engaged in a blended learning approach. We will have, um, three tiers. One tier will be the students who have a device at home, as well as internet service. Those students will continue with one of the online platforms that they were already using at school, and teachers will be monitoring their learning online, interacting with them, um, answering emails, responding to them in emails, as well as phone conversations with them about how they're progressing on the work. Then we have those students that we know who have a device, but they don't necessarily have internet. And so we're working to, um, get in contact with our families, to encourage them, if they can, to sign up with one of the providers that is offering free internet. Now, we know that there is some stipulations around whether or not they will be approved to get the internet that's free for sixty days. So we're going to continue to work with those families so that we can help them to remove the barriers. Then we have some students who do not have a device, nor do they have technology. So for a short period of time, those students will continue with the learning packets. And once again, we're hoping that that's going to be a short period of time. But learning packets will be provided to them every week. Until we're able to secure hotspots for them, and once we're able to secure hotspots for those families, we will be checking out a Title I device to them, because we have received communication from MDE that we can check out our Title I devices to our students, so that they can, um, all be engaged on online learning. So we'll be checking out a Title I device, uh, to them, um, once we secure hotspots for those families who are not able to take advantage of the free internet with one of the providers. Um, that is what you have in front of you. It is our continuity of learning for the remainder of the school year.
Do you need, do you need a motion?
No, there's nothing to be voted on, this is just an information item.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stewart, we appreciate all the work that you've put in in making sure that, um, you know, our children are still able to learn in this, in this environment, making sure that, um, this is still a, a school year that they're going to come out from in a positive manner, so thank you very much. Uh, does any board member have any questions specifically for Ms. Stewart on the COVID-nineteen response plan?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
What are we doing, and if I missed it, I'm sorry. What are we doing for the special needs students?
So with our special needs students, they'll be able to take advantage of the online learning as well, and those lessons can be, um, teachers can make modifications and accommodations to those lessons online so that they can continue with their learning as well.
Okay.
If that's a question, you're welcome.
Are there any further discussions? Thank you much, very much, Ms. Stewart, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I seek your approval to approve action item one point five Personnel Recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we approve action item one point five Personnel Recommendation. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the vote to approve action item one point five Personnel Recommendations will be conducted by roll call. As I call your name, please say your name. Vice President Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Green?
Yes.
Secretary Ramsdale? Trustee McIntosh?
Yes.
Trustee Perry?
Yes.
That's a yes for me. The motion passes six zero. Thank you, Ms. Washington.
Thank you.
Ms. Sikelsky?
Good evening, everyone. Um, first, I would like to seek your approval to approve action item eleven point one eight, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, Second Budget Amendment.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Second. Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, the vote to approve action item eleven point one eight, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, Second Budget Amendment, will be conducted by roll call vote. As I call your name, please say I or N. Vice President Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Green?
Yes.
Secretary Ramsdale?
Yes.
Trustee McIntosh?
Yes.
Trustee Perry?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me, the motion passes six zero.
Okay, thank you very much. I seek your approval to approve action item eleven point one nine, Food Service Contract Addendum Letter of Agreement.
So moved. Second it.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we approve action item eleven point one nine, Food Service Contract Addendum Letter of Agreement. Is there any discussion?
I have something.
Assistant Perry?
I just want to say, I hope, and this is, I'm not throwing any stones at anyone, but I hope we'll do better and alert the board if we are behind on any of our bills, so we're not looking at the amount that we're having to, well, we're losing two hundred thousand, and, and, and that's just bad, so I hope we do better on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, the vote to approve action item eleven point one nine, Food Service Contract Addendum Letter of Agreement, will be conducted by roll call vote. As I call your name, please say I or N. Vice President Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Green?
Yes.
Secretary Ramsdale?
Yes.
Trustee McIntosh? Trustee McIntosh? Trustee Perry?
Yes.
It's a yes for me, one last time, Trustee McIntosh? The vote passes five zero.
Yes, yes.
Okay, the vote passes six zero.
Somebody's crunching, who's crunching?
Vera. I'll stop.
That's just like the commercial on television.
Ms. Sikelsky, continue, please.
Thank you. I seek your approval to approve action item eleven point two zero, Authorization to Execute Hot Spots. Thank you. I seek your approval to approve action item 11.20, Authorization to Execute Hotspot Service Agreement.
Don't move.
Second it.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we approve action of 11.20, Authorization to Execute Hotspot Service Agreement. Is there any discussion? Seeing no future discussion, the vote to approve action of 11.20, Authorization to Execute Hotspot Service Agreement will be conducted by roll call vote. As I call your name, please say I or N. Vice President Wright?
Yes.
President Green?
Aye.
Secretary Ramsdale?
Yes.
Trustee McIntosh?
Yes.
Trustee Perry?
Yes.
And it's an I for me as well, I think that's the first time that roll call vote went without a hitch, so the motion passes 6-0.
Thank you very much. Also, for informational purposes, I've included the March check register, the March 31st balance sheet, and the March 31st budget versus actual. Were there any questions about those items?
No, none for me.
No.
Nope.
I had no questions on that either.
Perfect, well, thank you very much, everyone, have a wonderful night.
You too.
Thank you, you as well. Before we adjourn, I'll ask Stephen if there are any other comments in the public. I know it may take a moment for him to review, so I'll pause to give it time for the public to finalize submitting their comments. Stephen will read any comments or announce no comments.
Hello again. I have three, oh, here's four. The first three are all from Mr. Bruce Jordan. I'll read them consecutively as one comment, it seems to be the case. It says as, "I will say this is a shock that this is how union leadership found out that there is an issue and investigation with Superintendent Lopez. I think it is wise to set up a Zoom meeting with all leadership to discuss. The executive order of the governor has evaluation suspended, and this was brought up on Monday's Leadership Plan Meeting. All teacher evaluations should be suspended regardless of status. It would also be extremely helpful to know who all from the board are in attendance as well as anyone from the district in this forum." That is the end of Bruce Jordan's comment.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
And then I also have a comment here from Karen Christian. Would you like to respond, or would you like me to continue?
Continue.
Okay, from Mrs. Christian. "I am concerned that as a union president, I am finding out in an open forum that superintendent is suspended. There needs to be meeting with union heads." End of comment. And that is the end of the public comment, comment as of right now.
Thank you. Just a final reminder to the public that you can always send your comment to this email, fboe@flintschools.org. We'll read submitted comments at the next board meeting. Thank you. Do you have any remarks from individual board members? I will do a round robin. Vice President Wright?
Uh, no comment.
President Green?
I don't have a comment, I have a question, I'm not sure if I can get that in, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
You want, you want me to ask those now?
Yeah, I mean, is this, I guess I don't know what they're about, so if this isn't appropriate time for you to ask those questions, by all means.
For the clearance, to ask them now, do you want me to hold off?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, the first one is, because I've been getting a lot in the community, so my responsibility is to make sure this question gets answered. Do we know how long we plan to do the meal sites in the community? Do we have a, like, expiration date for that?
Do we know how long we plan to do the meal sites in the community?
Mm-hmm.
So per the, per the governor's executive order, that is to continue, so that will continue through the balance of the school year at this point in time. Normally, during the summer, we have the Meet Up and Feed Summer Program where our students are able to get food throughout the summer, and, and I believe that that program will also take place during the summer. I have not received anything or seen anything that stated that that would not be happening during the summer.
Okay, so ongoing, okay, we just wait on the. Okay, so the second question is, in reference to the packets that were not picked up. Got an update on that?
So at this point in time, our building principals, they are assessing the needs of the family as far as technology and as far as learning packets. At this point in time, our buildings will be open one day a week where they will be making, setting up appointments with our families so that they can come up and, and get the materials that they need, whether it's a device or whether it's a learning packet. We will be taking all necessary precautions with making sure that we're practicing social distancing, as well as we're not having too many people in a particular area at one time, which is why the, the majority of them have either set up appointments, or they have a system such as if your last name starts with the letters A through C, your time is at nine.
Oh, that's good, okay. Okay, just so I'm clear on this, this is my last question. Um, I know. Technology, so am I understanding correctly, then they are either doing the packet or the technology, or is it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So there, there, there are three tiers. So tier one is for those families who have devices and internet. So if they have devices and internet, then they will be engaged in one of the online learning platforms. We have families who have devices, but they don't necessarily have the internet, and so we're working with our families to either get them in contact with one of the internet providers so that they can, they can take advantage of the free internet. However, we know that that service, it has some stipulations around it, and some of our families still will not be able to tap into that free service, and so we're working on acquiring hotspots for those, for those families so that they can still be able to utilize the device that they already have at home and be engaged in the learning platform. We have families who do not have a device, nor do they have a hotspot, and so we're currently working on trying to put an app on all of our devices so that we can track them. We can track them, we can also monitor that they're, that they're using the device appropriately, and that they're not on websites that they shouldn't be on, and if they are, we can shut them down. So we're in the process of putting that on all of our devices, and so we'll be checking out devices to our families who do not have a device, nor do they have internet, and so for that tier three student who does not have a device or internet, that person is going to have to do a learning packet, temporary, until we can get them a device.
Okay, thank you, superintendent, I appreciate.
You're welcome.
I'm done, case.
Any other questions? Okay, Secretary Ramsdale?
No, no questions.
Trustee McIntosh?
No more questions, no.
Trustee Perry?
Um, one thing, before we hang up, could we do a moment of silence for Dr. Nate Burtley? Who was the first black superintendent of the Flint Community Schools?
Actually, Ms. Perry, if you'd like to leave that, please.
Okay, everybody, let's do a moment of silence now, starting now. Okay, thank you. Um, and I'm thinking, um, well, we just have to keep our eyes and ears open because, um, we may lose other people that belong to our district, because this is not a forgiving virus, so I just want to say to everybody, stay safe, and love and hug upon your family that's in your home, because we just don't know.
So true.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry.
Mm-hmm.
A special board meeting will be held on Wednesday, April 22nd, 2020 at 5:00 PM. A meeting notice will be posted to the district's website at www.flinthschools.org for public participation. Seeing no further action, this meeting is adjourned. Good night.
Guys, take care.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.